Hi, good evening everybody and welcome. Today is Monday, October 23rd, 2017, and I'd like to call to order the Lake County School Board meeting. Let's begin first with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please rise. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We certainly have an action-packed agenda tonight with some good discussion items, a lot of students in the audience to be recognized tonight, so it's gonna be a great night. And Superintendent, I believe you have somebody special to welcome back.
I do. I am very honored to welcome back our student representative from Eustis High School. This is Lindsay Studoff. So, welcome back. We look forward to hearing from you in just a little bit, but if you weren't here last time and didn't get to meet Lindsay, I'll tell you a little bit about her. She's been involved in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes for all four years of high school and is actively involved in the Jefferson Awards Club and president this year. She is also involved in student government, personalized learning club member, KEE club, and has participated in volleyball, varsity track, and field in competitive cheerleading. She has been dual-enrolled at Lake Sumter State College her junior and senior years and has taken AP and honors courses. She enjoys dog and cat sitting as well as babysitting, and she has a current GPA of 4.57. Welcome.
Superintendent, do we have any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to tonight's agenda? I think there's an emergency.
We have one emergency item, and it is the amendments to the audit plan.
All right. And I think due to some time sensitivity on that one, we'll declare it an emergency item and address the revisions to the audit plan. Any other items?
No, there were no other changes or additions.
How about from board members? Anything? All right. And the public input cards we have tonight are not specific to any of the items on our agenda or not noted to be specific, so we'll go with that tonight. Next, we'll approve the minutes.
All right. I recommend approval of the minutes from the special school board meeting dated October 2nd, 2017, the executive session for litigation, October 9th, 2017, executive session for collective bargaining, October 9th, 2017, and the regular school board meeting, October 9th, 2017.
All right, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions?
I'm moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie to approve those. Any questions or comments before voting? All right, and let's put to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And those minutes are approved unanimously. With that comes, I think, one of the best moments of the night where we get to recognize some folks. And I believe Sonya Blackstone, is that right, was gonna come forward to do some presentations?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, school board, and thank you Superintendent Corningay for letting us be here tonight. I am going to be announcing the STEM Scholars, which are students and teachers who have achieved greatness in STEM. The STEM Alliance are the ones who are giving these awards away. They will be getting a certificate and also a check in their little packet right there. The STEM Alliance is an organization in Central Florida that promotes increases in student performance and proficiency in higher-level math and science curricula. To help achieve this aim, the STEM Alliance and the Central Florida School Board's Coalition have designed a STEM Alliance Scholar Program. It is designed to serve as an incentive for students starting in the 7th grade to be more successful in STEM courses and take more advanced STEM courses throughout their middle and high school years. Lake County is proud to award four teachers with the PRISM Award for Excellence in Teaching STEM and 16 Lake County students who are receiving the STEM Scholar Award for their outstanding in STEM classes. Okay, students, when I call your name, you're gonna come up here. I'll give you your packet, and then if you'll line up over that way. Okay? All right. Our first student is from Oak Park Middle School, Isabella Morrison, for Most Improved Our second student is from Taveries Middle School, Melissa Janus, for Outstanding Science.[311.12][311.12](applause) Oak Park Middle School, Charles Branus, Most Improved Math.[323.12][323.12](applause) Umatilla Middle School, Grace Kessinger, Most Outstanding Math.[333.53][333.53](applause) Oak Park Middle School, Carly Johnston, Most Improved Science.[343.87][343.87](applause) Gray Middle School, Bryce Buchanan, Outstanding Science.[352.03][352.03](applause) Oak Park Middle School, Annalise Balteness, Most Improved Math.[362.53][362.53](applause) Umatilla Middle School, Allison Pickham, Outstanding Math.[371.78][371.78](applause) South Lake High School, Christopher Ganesh, Outstanding STEM Scholar.[382.75][382.75](applause) Leesburg High School, Craig Yox Jr., Outstanding STEM Scholar.[393.09][393.09](applause) Leesburg High School, Dylan Humphrey, Outstanding STEM Scholar.[402.91][402.91](applause) Leesburg High School, Hannah Fognon, Outstanding STEM Scholar.[412.62][412.62](applause) Umatilla High School, Andrew Colando, Outstanding STEM Scholar.[422.56][422.56](applause) Mount Dora High School, Natalie Berno, Outstanding STEM Scholar.[432.78][432.78](applause) Leesburg High School, William Pruitt, Outstanding STEM Scholar.[442.37][442.37](applause) And Leesburg High School, Andrew Robinson, Outstanding STEM Scholar.[451.00][451.00](applause) Okay, students, if you'll stay there. Okay, now we're gonna go on to the teachers. The teachers will be receiving a certificate, a check, and they will also be receiving a PRISM Award, which unfortunately is not here tonight because the STEM Alliance person got in a car accident this morning, but he's fine.[472.78][472.78](laughing) His car is not. So, we will get those to the teachers, but we do have their certificate and we have their check. From Oak Park Middle School, we have Stephanie Phillips, Outstanding Math Teacher.[487.75][487.75](applause) From Beverly Shores Elementary, Nicole Abarno, Outstanding Science Teacher.[499.00][499.00](applause) Clermont Middle School, Amy Herman, Outstanding Science Teacher.[509.56][509.56](applause) And from Eustis Middle School, Cindy Eckelberger, Outstanding Math Teacher.[521.33][521.33](applause) Congratulations to all the students and teachers for doing an outstanding job in our STEM Scholars program.
I see plenty of proud parents and principals out in the audience with their cameras and phones, so in just a moment after you get the photo opportunity, we'll invite all the recipients back this way to, so that the board can personally congratulate you as And Sheri, afterwards, do you want them all in the rotunda for a group photo? All right, excellent.
(inaudible)
All right, just a moment. We're gonna move into the public input segment of tonight's meeting. Our first speaker tonight will be Kathleen Roth. And as you're making your way down, I know others are making their way out, so, yes, please, please, but if you wanna pause for just a moment to give them all a chance to get settled. Yes, yes, and that's all right. Well, welcome and thank you for coming. So, we'll give you three minutes of fame, and then the superintendent or somebody from her staff would be more likely to follow up with you afterwards.
Okay, later.
Right, that's right.
I'll let you get past your papers down, 'cause we're gonna need to refer to them. Okay. My name is Kathleen Roth, and I am here to appeal Principal Lou Allen's decision to continue allowing the text "Born a Crime" to be used as an educational resource at East Ridge High School. My daughter's a 14-year-old freshman at East Ridge High School. It was required for her English class to read "Born a Crime" by Trevor Noah, who was a late-night comedian, by the first day of school. After my daughter read most of the book, she brought it to my attention that the book contained a significant amount of profanity in adult content. The book is placed in the adult nonfiction section at the Cooper Memorial Library. My initial attempts to email my concerns to the school were unsuccessful because the emails were filtered out by the school system because of the quotes that I put in there from the book. Because it would be highly inappropriate for me to use the language in the book at this forum, I have given you all a copy of my initial email, which contains a few examples of the questionable material. Just, I do have extra copies of this if anybody that's here in the audience wants to take the copies to see what is in the book. I followed through with a formal review of the material within East Ridge High School, and that is when the principal decided to keep the book. And I did include a copy of the letter from the principal in that packet that I gave you. It's the third page. According to the Lake County procedure, I'm able to appeal this decision with the superintendent and the school board, but also according to Florida House Bill 989, the board can hire an unbiased officer to review the material and decide whether or not it's appropriate to use to educate a 9th-grade English class. So, I don't know how you all wanna go forward with that. I'll let you let me know. Secondly, I'm here for a second reason, and that's the second page in your handout as an example from another book. I'm concerned about the age appropriateness of some of the supplemental reading assignments, so that seems to be what this is. It's decided this particular book, the "Born a Crime" book, was brought in by one teacher only, reviewed by one teacher only, and assigned. But it's not just the summer reading. So, during my other daughter's 9th-grade year, who is now in 11th grade, she was assigned to read the novel Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close by Jonathan Safran Foer. The novel contains adult sexual situations and themes. I have given you all a copy of the examples from the book. In the book, it actually lists sexual acts, and the boy in the book searches the internet to research the words that he doesn't recognize. Unfortunately, I also believe my daughter Googled the terms that she did not recognize, and very explicit adult material immediately comes up. It seems irresponsible at minimum for a teacher to not give a parent a heads-up before introducing this kind of material to my 14-year-old daughter. I'm very upset about it. Is that it? Can I finish my last?
Yes, please.
Okay. The parents have a right and obligation to decide when their child is ready to learn these more adult content. I'm hoping that maybe, as a result of this, it's not about getting books out that you don't agree with in every sense, but could there be a way that if the material has profanity, violent, sexual themes, that maybe a permission slip would go home? And alternative assignments could be an option if you don't feel your child is ready or it's against your own value system at your home for your child to read that material? And that's all.
All right. That wasn't too intimidating, right?
Well, I think I should. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much for bringing it to our attention, and like I said, a member of the staff would reach out to you to follow up on.
Okay, and I think all the information from that little card.
That's right. All right. Thank you. Our other speaker tonight is Steve Tibbetts.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Superintendent Corningay. Just a few quick things to share with you as I looked at the agenda this week. First of all, I thought it was very interesting. We're taking a trip all the way down to Florida Gulf College for students to get to see it. It's outside of the 100-mile limit, and there's a lot of colleges that they could go and see. I think it's a great thing to get kids out to schools to experience different kinds of campuses. Just wonder why it has to be so far away. I had a chance to just briefly look at the legislative priorities that are going to be discussed tonight. I would say that, looking at the ones that you've come up with, I'm excited about them and what you're trying to get accomplished. Then I looked at the states, the Florida Board, and one of its priorities is to get rid of physical education and keep recess. Recession is the biggest waste compared to physical education because there's kids that go and watch recess. They sit on their butts, they don't do anything, they aren't being physically educated, and to substitute that non-structured time for structured time, I think would be a terrible mistake. Finally, there's a comment about the state board relative to the federal government, and I think at the bottom of all of your priorities, we would say, let's go back to the original outline of what the federal government was supposed to do, which is stay out of states' businesses and quit messing 'em up. But you get an indication of how it works when the state messes up your business, so pay attention to this whole thing. The last thing I would just like to comment on is the program for Leesburg Elementary with Franklin Covey and the leader in me. It's $10,300 drop in the bucket. But I look at these things and say, we have the skilled people that can teach Seven Habits. I got on the internet this afternoon. If you don't know Frank Covey, Frank Covey made his fortune in day planners. He's a planner. Now he has a speaking association, and now he's becoming a consultant, and he sends people out to the tune of $10,300 to do stuff that I firmly believe our staff is capable of, going to the internet, writing down things like "Have a Plan," "Work First," "Templay," "Everyone Can Win." And as you look at your agenda and the language that they present it, it's right out of a PR book, folks. It's not our staff defining this. And I will just read quickly. "Teaches 21st Century Leadership." What is that? How does that differ from 20th century or 18th? Did leadership change somehow? "It creates a culture of student empowerment." That is terrific. "It's gonna transform wholly a school." Give me a break. It's not gonna happen. Doesn't happen. And then, we're gonna teach leadership language, and all I can envision is a drill instructor telling you. And I can tell you some leadership language, but we're not allowed to say that to kids anymore. So, anyway, when these things come before you, look at 'em a little closely. I've spoken to the superintendent quickly this evening and the principal. I think the staff can do this and save you $10,300 and some odd dollars. Thanks for your time.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments tonight, Mr. Chair.
Can we?
You all wanna pull that one to for separate consideration? All right, we can do that. Chairman. That was 10.01.
I interrupted Mr. Mathias.
Go ahead, Doctor.
No.
You can go first.
No. I was trying to let you.
Is that what you were gonna ask?
No, 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 no. Oh. I just wanna speak for just one second. I wanna first thank Mrs. Ross for coming before us. This is outrageous. This is outrageous, and I'd like, after you have a chance to look into it, that we speak about it, or you speak to the board.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you all very much. So, with that, we'll move into our reports section of tonight's agenda. First, we get to hear from our student, Lindsay. Welcome back.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. In case you weren't here last time, I'm Lindsay Studoff, and I'll be updating you on the student life at Eustis High School's campus and the people that helped make it better. As president of Student Government Association and Jefferson's Awards Club, I joins both the clubs together to help gather items for Thanksgiving baskets. These baskets help provide the students that do not have enough money for Thanksgiving dinners, a dinner that is filled with all the foods you normally see in a Thanksgiving dinner, such as turkey, stuffing, and casseroles. So far, we are beginning to prepare 20 baskets for the students at Eustis High School and their families. Our Fellowship of Christian Athletes, otherwise known as FCA, has started a tradition of coming together before every game that our school participates in to pray over all the players and everyone involved. The club also plans to host a Field of Faith tonight to have the community come together and have a fun and safe time playing ultimate frisbee. Beta Club has started another year of mentoring the young students at Eustis Heights Elementary. In sports, the football team has one more game left in districts that they will be playing this week. Also, we are very excited for the Boys and Girls Swim Team that will be going to regionals in Gainesville. At Eustis High School, we are very eager to find new and exciting ways to supporting students and faculty. Last week, we began Thrive 45. This time is for students who do not have the opportunity to make tests or clubs due to their after-school activities. This time allows them, during school 45 minutes, to do either of those things and help to become a better student in their school. Each staff are hard-working and dedicated people. An effort to recognizing, giving moral support, and fostering community within the faculty, a shout-out was started. Throughout the week, staff can place a note in the shout-out box located in the faculty break room that highlights something positive about each fellow staff member that they either experienced or witnessed. On Friday, these notes are drawn out, and some of them are posted in the email for the faculty to see. These are both inspirational and positive to read, the good deeds being done, and shows that good deeds do get noticed. My personal shout-out is to recognize Ms. Beal. In her AP Biology class, she has utilized the black desks and brought in bright-colored dry erase markers for students to use that they can learn different procedures in bio by illustrating them right there on their desk. This engages many different elements in learning and mixes up the fun back in learning. Let us not forget to honor Ms. Menzey, a French and Spanish teacher who was awarded this year, awarded Teacher of the Year, and Courtney Welch, who was recognized as Rookie of the Year. Again, thank you so much for having me and all the time you have.
All right, thank you very much. Pardon me, just a moment.
Oh, my goodness.
There's a little lizard run by here. I don't wanna get the superintendent startled, but it looks like he's escaping.
Yes. He's already run across my foot once, and I have maintained my composure. I'll just have you know.
There was a lizard?
A lizard.
As the chairman says, I think my child put that in my bag.
I wouldn't doubt it, but I guess I won't take full credit. Nonetheless, it looks like we're all safe now.
He's over there now.
All right, with that, I was really trying to restrain myself to make sure I wasn't gonna burst out in laughter during your report, but I saw this thing inching closer and closer, and I was getting real nervous for our superintendent there. All right, with that, we'll slide to the other end of the dais here to our attorney.
Two things to report. First is tomorrow morning, Ms. Summerlin and I will be representing you at the mediation on the Lake Academy Charter matter. We've already told the mediator, who is Ms. Tepper with the Department of Education, that we would try to come to some understanding about what we would bring back to the board, but that we weren't making the final decision, and we were bringing whatever that we ended up with back to the board for determination as to whether we wanted to move forward with it. And they've asked for the specific reasons, and we gave them the reasons, the local board member and the transportation, and the Code of Student Conduct, and the fact that we had been told several things and that wasn't honored by them lately, and, I'm sorry, I'm watching the lizard surge over in the corner.
All right.
And that we had been told by the charter several things, which we found to be untrue. We weren't sure whether we were gonna want to enter into contract with someone that we didn't feel was trustworthy and was gonna keep their word. So, that's what I'm going to present, and we'll see how that does tomorrow. The other matter is, at the last board meeting, I believe it was, I told you that I would call the attorney for the Florida Education Association in the best and brightest lawsuit and relay what our thoughts were of that. I told him that we weren't cheerleaders for the, either the Department of Education or the legislature in this particular program, that if it got changed, we weren't going to object, and that we didn't wanna be part of their lawsuit if we could avoid it because we'd rather not spend the money and try to defend it. Well, it was interesting and probably not surprising that that wasn't the first call like that that he had received. And he told me that they had not yet issued any summonses for any of the 67 school boards, that the only summons that had been issued was for the Florida Education Association, that one of the things that they, and that they weren't planning on issuing those summonses anytime real soon, they were going to discuss the possibilities with the court about taking some action on some of the issues that were gonna be ruled rate preliminarily by the Department of Education, which, some of which might deal with the individual school board's involvement in the lawsuit, and that maybe some of those things would be done before they move forward. It wasn't a very definitive response as to here's what would happen or not. What can I report to you at the moment is there doesn't seem to be any rush to get us named what we're named, but to get us served in the lawsuit along with the other 67 counties and have all of the counties defending that, something that I don't think they're anxious to initiate, and they'll probably try to do something to avoid that if possible. So, for the moment, he said, you know, there might be two or three months before anything else of any significance happens. You know, it suggests we just kinda wait to see what happens. There's no sense in getting involved in defending something if you're not ultimately going to be involved in it anyway. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We don't have any unfinished business on our agenda tonight, so we'll move into the new business portion, the consent agenda, with the exception of the one item that we've pulled for separate consideration. Superintendent?
Which one do we end up pulling?
10.01.
All right, I recommend approval of items 8.01 to 9.04 and 10.02 to 10.06.
All right, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions? Motion by Bill and a second by?
Second.
Stephanie. Very good. Any questions or comments before voting on the consent agenda?
Just one.
Sure.
I was with the understanding that we were going to redo something with 802?
That's correct. I'm sorry I failed to bring that to your attention. We left it on the agenda as Ms. Briggs was able to get additional information, and so she would like to share that information if you have an interest in hearing why it's still on the agenda. I have an interest.
All right.
Please come in. Yes, please.
Should we pull it and then go back to it?
Oh, yeah, should it be pulled and then?
Yeah, well, let's go ahead and do it that way. Let's go ahead and pull 8.02 for separate consideration.
But we just need to redo the motion so that 8.2 is not part of it at this time.
I amend the motion to pull 8.2.
Yeah, I mean, if the motion or in the second, you agree to.
Yeah, amend the motion to 8.2.
Agree.
All right. Looks like we've got acknowledgement from the motion and second order to go ahead and do that. So, the consent agenda, minus 10.01 just for clarity, and 8.02, those will be addressed separately. So, you're voting on the rest of the consent agenda.
Right.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. All right, and that carries 5-0. And now we'll address 8.02. We'll put a... Also, we are very excited for the Boys and Girls Swim Team that will be going to regionals in Gainesville. At Utes High School, we are very eager to find new and exciting ways to supporting students and faculty. Last week, we began Thrive Forty-Five. This time is for students who do not have the opportunity to make tests or clubs due to their after-school activities. This time allows them, during school forty-five minutes, to do either of those things and help to become a better student in their school. Each staff are hard-working and dedicated people. An effort to recognizing, giving moral support, and fostering community within the faculty, a shout-out was started. Throughout the week, staff can place a note in the shout-out box located in the faculty break room that highlights something positive about each fellow staff member that they either experienced or witnessed. On Friday, these notes are drawn out, and some of them are posted in the email for the faculty to see. These are both inspirational and positive to read, the good deeds being done, and shows that good deeds do get noticed. My personal shout-out is to recognize Ms. Beal. In her A B Bio- AP Biology class, she has utilized the black desks and brought in bright-colored dry erase markers for students to use that they can learn different procedures in bio by illustrating them right there on their desk. This engages many different elements in learning and mixes up the fun back in learning. Let us not forget to honor Ms. Menzey, a French and Spanish teacher who was awarded this year, awarded Teacher of the Year, and Courtney Welch, who was recognized as Rookie of the Year. Again, thank you so much for having me and all the time you have.
Hi, thank you very much. Pardon me, just a moment.
Oh, my goodness.
There's a little lizard run by here. I don't wanna get the superintendent startled, but it looks like he's escaping.
Yes, he's already run across my foot once, and I have maintained my composure, I'll just have you know.
There was a lizard?
A lizard.
As the chairman says, I think my child put that in my bag.
I wouldn't doubt it, but uh, I guess I won't take full credit. Nonetheless, it looks like we're all safe now.
He's over there now.
Alright, with that. I'm sorry, I was really trying to restrain myself to make sure I wasn't gonna burst out in laughter during your report, but I saw this thing inching closer and closer, and I was getting real nervous for our superintendent there. Alright, with that, we'll slide to the other end of the dais here to our attorney.
Uh, two things to report. Well, first is tomorrow morning, Ms. Summerlin and I will be representing you at the mediation on the Lake Academy Charter matter. We've already told the mediator, who is Ms. Tepper with the Department of Education, that we would try to come to some understanding about what we would bring back to the board, but that we weren't making the final decision, and we were bringing whatever that we ended up with back to the board for a determination as to whether we wanted to move forward with it. Uh, and they've asked for the specific reasons. And we gave them the reasons, the board, local board member, and the transportation, and the code of student conduct, and the fact that we had been told several things, and that wasn't honored by them lately, and I'm sorry, I'm watching the lizard surge over in the corner. And that we had been told by the um, Charter several things, which we found to be untrue. We weren't sure whether we were gonna want to enter into contract with someone that we didn't feel was trustworthy and was gonna keep their word. So that's what I'm going to present, and we'll see how that does tomorrow. The other matter is, at the last board meeting, I believe it was, I told you that I would call the attorney for the Florida Education Association in the best and brightest lawsuit, and relay what our thoughts were of that. I told him that we weren't cheerleaders for the uh, either the Department of Education or the legislature in this particular program, that if it got changed, we weren't going to object. And that we didn't wanna be part of their lawsuit if we could avoid it, because we'd rather not spend the money and try to defend it. Well, it was interesting, and probably not surprising, that that wasn't the first call like that that he had received. And he told me that they had not yet issued any summonses for any of the sixty-seven school boards, that the only summons that had been issued was for the Florida Education Association, that one of the things that they, and that they weren't planning on issuing those summonses anytime real soon. They were going to discuss the possibilities with the court about taking some action on some of the issues that were gonna be re- raised preliminarily by the Department of Education, and which, some of which might deal with the individual school board's involvement in the lawsuit, and that maybe some of those things would be done before they move forward. It wasn't a very definitive response as to here's what would happen or not. And what can I report to you at the moment is there doesn't seem to be any rush to get us named what we're named, but to get us served in the lawsuit along with the other sixty-seven counties and have all of the counties defending that. Something that I don't think they're anxious to initiate, and they'll probably try to do something to avoid that if possible. So, for the moment, he said, you know, there might be two or three months before anything else of any significance happens. You know, it suggests we just kinda wait to see what happens. There's no sense in getting involved in defending something if you're not ultimately going to be involved in it anyway. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Alright, well, thank you very much. We don't have any unfinished business on our agenda tonight, so we'll move into the new business portion, the consent agenda, with the exception of the one item that we've pulled for separate consideration. Superintendent.
Which one do we end up pulling?
Oh, ten point oh one.
Alright, I recommend approval of items eight point oh one to nine point oh four and ten point oh two to ten point oh six.
Alright, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions? Motion by Bill and a second by?
Second.
Stephanie, very good. Any questions or comments before voting on the consent agenda?
Just one.
Sure.
I was with the understanding that we were going to redo something with eight oh two.
That's correct. I'm sorry I failed to bring that to your attention. We left it on the agenda as Ms. Briggs was able to get additional information, and so she would like to share that information if you have an interest in hearing why it's still on the agenda.
I have an interest.
Okay.
Alright.
Please come in. Yes, please.
Oh, yeah, should it be pulled and then?
Yeah, well, let's go ahead and do it that way. Let's go ahead and pull eight point oh two for separate consideration.
But we just need to redo the motion so that eight point two is not part of it at this time.
Amend the motion to pull eight point two.
Yeah, I mean, if the motion or in the second.
Yeah, amend the motion to eight point two.
Alright, looks like we've got acknowledgement from the motion and second order to go ahead and do that. So, the consent agenda, minus ten point oh one, just for clarity, and eight point oh two. Those will be addressed separately. So, you're voting on the rest of the consent agenda.
Right.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Alright, and that carries five zero. And now we'll address eight point oh two. We'll put a recommendation out there and bring it to the floor for the motion and second, and then we'll do some discussion.
Recommend approval of eight point oh two, the Grant Program Evaluator.
Alright, there's a motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie. We're open for discussion here. Thank you so much for bringing some information forward for us tonight.
Good evening, thank you. I was able to find out more about the RFP, and the state does require the district to have a third-party evaluator for certain federal and state grants. Without that evaluator in place as a third-party, the district would be unable to apply for those grants. Because we do want more funding and more grants, we would want that. However, the cost of the grant, or the cost of that evaluator would be included within the grant itself. And I believe those were the questions that others had shared. Is there anything else I could add to?
I don't understand what this evaluator, is this, the, I'm sorry, is this evaluator? Oh, okay, so this Grant Program E evaluator is the mandate that's required by the grants?
Yes, it's required by the state of Florida for certain federal grants that come through the state of Florida or certain state grants that they offer as well. They require this third-party evaluator.
So that only applies to certain grants? So in many cases, that we would apply for grants over the course of normal activity from the district, and we wouldn't use this other evaluator unless it's necessary?
Correct.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, so we don't need to set up a system of evaluating them in advance to find out if we are making?
On our own, no, we do not. This is a requirement.
Because it's a statute, it's a statute.
I mean, it's not exactly enumerated in a statute, but it is required as part of our application for those grants.
I understand.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. I mean, that helps, because the way it looked was like we were getting ready to put someone else on board, and it's not. And it's all paid for through the grants, and that's what I just wanna make sure the public is aware of, that we're not hiring somebody else that's being paid out of the general fund. This is all being taken care of out of the grant money.
And using it as necessary.
As necessary.
Required, not, not every grant meets that criteria. Alright, very good. We all ready to vote? Alright, and then let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That one carries unanimously. And we have one more item left from that agenda to look at, and that's ten point oh one. Superintendent, you can.
Recommend approval of ten point oh one, the consultant agreement with Franklin Covey.
Alright, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
And a second by Kristi. Thank you so much. Alright.
Can Emily? Ms. Weiss, Dr. Weiskopf, perhaps just discuss this? Because I just don't know much about.
So, I'd be happy to speak to this. I think probably Heather might be a better choice, but um.
We can invite her on down as well.
Yeah, so I am.
Bring her down.
Heather and I talked about this. I think this is a program, although it does have some extensive expenses. It does seem to be one of those opportunities for students to really learn some leadership over the years. And so, I happen to have worked with this particular program in previous districts. I think it's a good opportunity for kids. It's sort of not character ed, but kind of that further extension of having opportunities for kids to actually step up and take leadership and learn about leadership. So I would respectfully disagree with the comments earlier and think that this is, it's also ongoing, so it provides lots of different support. So it isn't paying somebody just to come in one time and do training. And so that's the sort of training that I avoid. I like to see ongoing training that where it supports the school throughout the years, and I think that it does that. I also think it takes a leader who's devoted and committed to it, and I think Heather could speak to the ideal that she's implemented before in other schools and wants to take it to the school that she's at now. And so, she's had a lot of success with it, so I think that's, I think I'd like to hear her speak to that, and maybe that might be helpful.
Can I hand out a few things?
Yes.
This was not spontaneous. You were gonna go over here and.
Well done.
Thank you.
Sure this correlates with one of the seven habits. Thank you.
I'm sure you carry this around with you all the time.
Okay, thank you, and good evening Superintendent Carnegie, board members, and guests. To begin, if you can look in your packet, I've given a brief narrative. I'm not gonna ask you to read the whole thing, but it is a little bit of crime statistics about the Leesburg population. I am a Leesburg native, so this is very near and dear to my heart. So if we look just at the first sentence, with a crime rate of sixty-two per one thousand residents, Leesburg has one of the highest crime rates in America compared to all communities of all sizes, from the smallest towns to the largest cities. And then I'm gonna skip you down to the bottom. For Leesburg, we found that the violent crime rate is one of the highest in the nation across all communities. And then the last sentence, according to Neighborhood Scout's analysis of FBI-reported crime data, your chance of becoming a victim of one of these crimes in Leesburg is one in one thirty, one hundred and thirty. If you turn to the next page, there's a comparison of violent crime rates in Leesburg with the national median, which is three point eight per one thousand residents, Florida, four point six two per a thousand residents, and Leesburg, seven point six eight. That's alarming to me. On the following page is property crime comparison. And again, this is per one thousand. The national median being twenty-six, the state twenty-eight, and Leesburg fifty-four. If this does not cry out a need for some kind of character education, I'm not sure what does. When you look at the following page for Leader and Me, it kinda goes over exactly what kind of program it is and what it implements, and the leadership skills that it instills into these students. In, within our community, if these leadership skills were an integral part of our population up and coming, I do not believe we would see the crime rates resting at the place that they are. I also don't believe if we were looking at purchasing a supplemental curriculum piece for ten thousand, it would be up for discussion. But to me, this is just as important, the building of the character of these students. If you'll look on the page after that, it says annual membership, and this is actually the piece that is up for discussion tonight on Leader and Me and what it includes. It includes a coaching system, as Dr. Weiskopf spoke to, and this means that I will have representatives, because it is copyrighted, to be able to train this material. So you have to have somebody from the corporation come and do it. And they come and have coaching days with my teachers. My teachers have already been trained on the seven habits themselves and how to incorporate it into their lives and their understanding. The next portion that we will have on the coaching days that will come with this membership is then taking it into the classroom. Now, what does it look like in kid language? And how do we get it across to our students? It's also the online component, which has all the materials that the teachers will use to teach the curriculum. And then, of course, it's intellectual property license as well. So those are all the components that come with the membership fee. On the next following pages, again, as Dr. Weiskopf pointed out, it's not a one-and-done type thing. So on the next few pages, you'll see how the implementation progresses throughout the school years. On the page after, pardon me, after, where it says empowering instructions, so I'm looking at this chart. I've kinda just made a little breakout of what it looks like through the years on a rollout progression. I've also put funding sources on the side, so you see it doesn't come out of any operating or anything like that. You will notice that the launching Leadership Consulting Fee, this, my SAC has wanted to take this on, because my parents and my community behind my school are very much behind this program and bringing it on, and they see a need for it in the Leesburg area. In the back pages, if you'll go past the two agreements, consultant agreements, I have listed many case studies where we've seen schools absolutely transformed through this character education initiative, because it is a life-altering program to learn. Once these students have these habits embedded into their lifestyle, they have it, they have it forever. And of course, my hopes, again, this is my community. This is, this is where I live. This is where my children live. I don't wanna see crime rates like this. So I feel it my duty to make a difference with this.
Heather, is this in your school improvement plan as well?
Oh, yes.
What are your measurable outcomes do you expect for this year?
Measurable outcomes, we have a, we expect to obviously a decrease in referrals, decrease in discipline. But when you have that engagement as well, we should also see an increase in academic achievement.
So you have some levels that you've set within there?
Yes, ma'am.
I know, I've spoken a lot about character development programs because of Spring Creek and how they brought on Responsive Classroom. And I know that, I think one of the best examples that I have is when the principal told me that a new child came into the school, and he was starting to get into a spat with another kid, and, and another student stepped up and said, no, we don't do that at this school. And I think creating that culture is incredible, that we actually can create a culture of caring in a school, and that you're trying to do this, and if this program can do that, I'm, you've got, you've got me.
Right, and as Dr. Weiskopf said, I was able to, Mrs. Hunt, when she originally opened up Sawgrass Bay, she brought this on. When I became the principal down at Sawgrass Bay, I was able to kinda pick it up and run with it and really see its implementation in the school, and I was blown away by it. We've all heard of the seven habits of highly effective people, the program that Covey brought on. But to see the Leader and Me component of it and to see it in children, it was transformational for me to see, and I just thought, I, Leesburg needs this. They need this.
And a testament to that success, I was on the campus of Sawgrass Bay just a couple of weeks ago, and this program survives just the length of one principal at that school. It is still ingrained in the culture, still ingrained in what the students are talking about. As I was chatting with them, they knew exactly what all this was and how it impacted their lives, so.
Absolutely.
It's got the longevity piece to it.
Absolutely.
And thank you for bringing this forward.
Thanks. Alright, well, we've got a motion on the floor. Any other questions before we vote on it? Alright, now let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, and that carries unanimously. We do have one emergency item, and that involves the audit plan tonight.
Alright, I recommend approval of this emergency item, the internal audit plan seventeen eighteen revisions. I know that Ms. Luke is prepared to speak to this as your representative on this committee.
Alright, well, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. A motion by Bill and a second by?
Second.
Sandy, why not?
Okay.
You have his hand up.
That's great.
Alright, and did you have some information you wanted to share?
I, we just, Tom and I met on Friday morning, and he was talking to me about the original, which you guys have a copy of, the original audit plan. And you'll see in there, for November and December, he had the staffing capacity audit. That work seems to fall in the programmatic side of the house, and we've had discussions about finance versus programmatic. I believe this superintendent has a consultant that's going to be doing that work. And so he was concerned about what he should be doing with his time, November, December, and he said, obviously, I can move some of this up, or I can do this. But we did speak about the hotline back in April of two thousand seventeen, and he said he hasn't been able to do any work on that, get bids out, what would we call it? Who's gonna manage it? Like, there's a lot of work that needed to be done. So he suggested, I suggested that we put it in November, December. We discussed the timeframe that wouldn't be there in November. We have the holidays and we have breaks. And so it seemed like it was, it would be a good fit for him to come back then and discuss what we would do with the hotline. So, thank, thank Mrs. Carnegie and Mr. Dodd for working together this weekend to get this on. Obviously, it's timely, because it's October twenty-third, yes. And this was November and December, so we need to get it on tonight. Thank you for considering it.
Despite all the holidays interjecting and competing for the use of time there, should he finish that early, then I assume he's not gonna just.
Yeah, no, take off.
That's right. He'll just progress through the.
Yeah, down here where he doesn't.
If he does, we'll call the hotline.
Alright, very good. Do you all have any questions about this one before we vote? Or any other comments? Alright, now let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Carries five zero. And that brings us to our discussion portion of the agenda. The first item is the Round Lake Elementary Conversion Charter Capacity Expansion Plan.
Recommend approval of eleven point oh one, the Round Lake Elementary Conversion Charter. Who's here tonight?
So moved.
Alright, there's a motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie. She beat you on that one. We'll go to the replay later. Any questions or comments before voting? Or, I know it's not the first, our first exposure to this. We've had the chance to experience this through workshop and get our questions vetted in that. So it looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And that carries five zero. Bringing us to our legislative priorities.
Recommend approval of eleven point oh two legislative priorities. And I'd also like for your consideration, we have Mr. Robert Stewart. He's with Gray Robinson, your representative in Tallahassee, who's been, thought he might come and just, he's had a chance to look at your priorities and just give you some feedback as to what he sees as the landscape moving forward with this upcoming legislative session, if you'd like to hear from him.
Alright, well, we do have a recommendation from the superintendent. So if we get a motion, a second, we can bring it to the floor. Motion by Stephanie, second by Bill. Beat you again. Alright, so it's on the floor for discussion, and we'll invite Robert Stewart on down. Thank you so much for making the trip for us tonight, and we look forward to any wisdom or guidance that you might be able to give us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening. I'll start by apologizing for my tardiness. I don't know if y'all know this, but the school board is not meeting at the school board building tonight. You're meeting at the county commission building. So I was a little bit late, because I went there first, not thinking it was here, so I apologize.
You didn't break in, did you?
What's that? I sure as heck tried. I shook the door, but shockingly, nobody answered it. No, thank you so much for having me tonight, and I have had a chance to speak with the superintendent and talk with her a little bit about some of these priorities and that are now before you for consideration. I'll give you a very quick, to keep you guys on schedule, overview of what's going on in Tallahassee, what to look for over the next couple of weeks. For all intents and purposes, last week, session started. The committee weeks began. They are meeting this week, and then they'll have a week off, two weeks in November. They'll be off for Thanksgiving, and then the first full week of December, they'll be up there, and then off for the holidays, and then they're back, starting the regular session the second Tuesday of January. So for all intents and purposes, we are now in the legislative session season and preparing for that. Not surprisingly, a lot of the conversation going on in Tallahassee during the first committee meeting week, and will continue this week, is on hurricane preparedness and response, and preparation for the impacts of Maria. So talking both about Irma and Nate that hit Florida, and what we need to do differently, or better, or worse, or, you know, change as we prepare for the next inevitable storm, but also about the impacts of Maria and the influx of students and families that are moving on a permanent basis to central Florida, and to Florida generally, but a lot are coming to central Florida. And I know that those impacts are already being felt here in Lake County. And so, that is gonna take up a good degree of bandwidth, both in the committee meeting process as well as during the regular session, as the legislature grapples with this unknown fiscal impact of families and students and folks with needs that are being permanently relocated to Florida thanks to the devastation that they faced on their, on their home island. So, couple that with a lower-than-expected revenue estimate in the most recent Revenue Estimating Conference, and couple that with a House of Representatives leadership that is still pretty intent on not funding what they call member projects, and a Senate that feels differently about that, and they think that member projects are an important part of the process. And we have the makings of another interesting session as we head into twenty eighteen. Your priorities, I would, I would say, are largely steeped in policy, things that are important to the board and to school districts on matters of policy. And I would say, as I look ahead to the session, that's a good place to be, because money will be even more tight than it was last session. The one appropriations item that you have really sort of fits nicely into the workforce development conversation that is happening at a high level in Tallahassee. So you'll remember, at last session, there was a approval of an eighty-five million dollar, what's called the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund. That's a fund that the Department of Economic Opportunity That's a fund that Department of Economic Opportunity and Enterprise Florida can use to go pursue projects on the infrastructure level, or on the workforce development level, that will, will buy, buy their investment, increase economic development. That's not a pot of money necessarily that we can qualify for as a school board on different projects, but it is something that drives the conversation about workforce development, and, and you guys are in that wheelhouse with one of your priorities, so I think that's a, that's a good, positive place to be as we look ahead. And, and the governor will be releasing some of those approvals here in the next, I would say, couple of weeks, because they're going to want to be turning dirt on some projects between now and the start of session, that, that then he can then use as justification to go back to the legislature for another round of that money, because it was one-time, non-recurring money. The, the only one of your priorities that I might express some hesitation on is the one related to the mills, not because it's not a good idea, and not because it's not worthy of your time and consideration and that of the legislature, just that as I look and forecast out, any issue dealing with what can be seen as raising taxes is something that is, and, and if passed as prologue, it hasn't been in a conversation that's moved very far in this particular legislature. So, that's not me telling you to take it off, I think just go in expectations in, in the right place on it, as you look ahead to the session. That's really one of the ones that, that jumped out at me as I looked at it, but we're, we remain completely honored to represent you and your interests in Tallahassee. We look forward to working with the legislature on your priorities, particularly as, if, if they take a look at some of the things in 7029, or depending on where all that goes, and some of the glitch bills or tweaks that may happen to that over the next several months, we look to be right at the forefront with you on, on issues such as the paper and pencil for testing, and the other items on your, on, on your agenda. So, with that, Mr. Chair, Madam Superintendent, I'd answer any questions you've got, or I can sit down and shut up, either one's good.
Well, I, I think certainly, if I'm going to speak for us, we, we probably don't, it would not be wise to hold our breath waiting for that, two mills, but, you know, we, we throw that on there every year to remind them, you know, I think the moment we just give that up is the moment we, we forever lose hope on that. But perhaps to compensate for that is the last bullet on that page about the adequate funding for the growing need for maintenance and repair of our district-operated public schools, and, and the Tampa Bay Times had a, a good article about that following the storm, and how some of these charter schools couldn't be used as shelters because they don't meet the specifications, but yet it's bizarre that they're going to be funded at the same level that we would be per student if their construction costs are not as high. Furthermore, look at capital means, some of these schools, they're not required to provide transportation, so once again, that's another expense that district-operated public schools would have, buying buses and maintaining those, that they wouldn't have, and, and so I just don't know that that's equitable. And so, you know, looking at that, and the ramifications about depleting our capital reserves over the next five years under that, I think there's probably maybe some, some hope there that we could come up with a better solution, or that the legislature would.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
In regards to the infrastructure, I know you, we spoke about the special projects with workforce and infrastructure, what, can you clarify that?
So there is an, there is an infrastructure, well, I'll call it the infrastructure fund, the, the technical name of, name of it is the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund, and that was established by the legislature as part of the budgetary process this past year, actually they went into special session on it, you'll remember some of those details. That, that fund is a fund administered by the Department of Economic Opportunity, an EFI, with final approvals resting with the governor on where that money ought to go, and it can go to either publicly-owned infrastructure, or to workforce development projects in, in partnership with state colleges and universities. So, those are the two pots that the money can go to, if it, if, if the governor so deems appropriate, and actually, there's already been, there's been no awards of that money yet, but just in the last committee meeting week, there was already some significant discussion in the Senate about, frankly, how little oversight there really is on these dollars once the EFI, the DEO, and the governor decide they want to spend them. So no, no projects have been selected yet, but we do expect, I think last count, there was $650 million worth of requests for an $85 million pot of money, so not everybody's going to get dollars, and the money is going to go largely to projects, if I were guessing, that are completely shovel-ready on the, on the infrastructure side, and/or completely ready for immediate investment on the workforce development side, so that there can be return on investment shown between now, and if I'm the governor, preferably January or February, when the legislature's building the budget for next year. So it's a pot of money that, that, I guess if the right partnership was established between the school district and perhaps a higher ed on, on the, on the topic of workforce development, but the reality is, there's a lot of those, I think decisions have probably already been made, but it, but there is at least a recognition in Tallahassee about the importance of the workforce development conversation, and I think it'll be a big campaign issue too, frankly, as we look ahead to 2018, with folks running for statewide office, talking about those types of things, and investing in that type of stuff, career readiness type issues. So that's a little bit, let that answer your question.
Yeah, I did, I remember, that's what kind of tweaked my interest, we talked about that briefly, but, okay.
And I'll just tell you, we did pursue that when Robert brought that to us before, and as a, as he said, as a school district, we were not eligible for the funds, we would have to partner with someone else, and so part of Dr. Weiskopf's staff, the grants folks, they all met with Lake Sumter, we worked on the application, they got pretty far into the application process, but realized that we did, still did not meet some of the eligibility criteria involving industry certifications and things that would have to be connected to it, so found out that we were not eligible for those funds after all.
Any other questions, or?
But with the comments of the chair, and you've been in Tallahassee, is that correct? Did you just come down today to see?
I'm going up tomorrow, I stayed in town today.
The 7069, and how it attacked public education from the standpoint of funding, that, that really needs to be laser, and I'm convinced that the legislators truly in their heart didn't know what they were quite doing, so we look forward to you bringing light to them.
We, we will certainly work on that, and I, I won't, I won't pretend to, to guess what the legislature did or didn't mean to do, but I know it was a 250-page bill that was released about an hour before they voted on it, so I read fast, but I don't read that fast, but, yeah, message delivered.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
I wanted to ask, I, I, you have the, the FSBA proposed legislative platform, which Mr. Tibbetts mentioned, and the, I, I went through it, and had a few ones that I didn't know if we wanted to add to our legislative, or if you wanted me to, I, I am going to a, to discuss the legislative platform with them this week, so I specifically noted number one, under assessment and accountability, there is a bill, and your input would be helpful too, I know there is a bill with regard to third grade retention out there, I don't know if it has any legs at all. I had noted, under education and funding, number 11, repeal limitations that restrict a school district's ability to utilize Title I funds efficiently across school districts with high poverty and low achievement, which is part of what, 7069 hits. I had noted, under school choice options, number 22, with specific bullet point four, which says, "Support a comprehensive plan to restore local school board authority over charter schools that at a minimum includes," they have a whole list, but specifically authorizing a school district to reject HOPE, HOPE, a HOPE operator, and requiring a HOPE operator to employ certified teachers. So the HOPE operators are the ones that are supposed to come in and rescue everything. 23, in that same section, require local governing authority to relegate local zoning and land use requirements or restrictions applied to charter schools to the same extent as applied to traditional public schools. So part of what 7063 did was gave charter schools like, like free rein, like you can just put your charter school anywhere, and you don't have to follow zoning, yet, you don't need, you could put it where, like, like where houses are supposed to go, very strange. Just two more, I circled 20, just one more, 29. Repeal those portions of HB 7069, which infringe on the authority of school boards to make decisions in the best interest of their communities, including the appropriate expenditure of the 1.5 capital outlay millage revenues and Title I funds, which may mirror previous ones. So, I didn't know if you wanted to add any of those, because I feel like the more people yelling at the legislature, the better.
Have you all, do you all have the FSBA meeting to agree on, on, is this, is this the full platform, or have, have they?
This is the proposed platform, there apparently was a process?
Yes.
That I am a newbie on.
That's all right, I was a newbie last year on it, so, so, if, if this resembles last year, that they gave us all of these things, and we had to narrow it down to three.
Okay.
That's, that's where you see the asterisks here, that it resembles something else from the previous year's platform.
Okay.
Which seems overwhelming to think, there are 44 things that we need to do.
Right, I'm like?
We're going to pick three, and the idea was that?
This goes on forever.
It does, and, and they need to do them all, but nonetheless, you know, the, the idea was that less is more, so.
So that's what we're going to be yelling about.
So that's what we're going to be doing, yes, yes, good luck.
Got you. Okay, so did any of those, like, stick out to you in particular?
I, I think all of them are important issues, I don't mean to, to punt on the question. On, on the one specifically, the third grade retention one that you mentioned, I know the bill's out there, to be honest with you, I haven't read it in its entirety, and it hasn't gotten a hearing yet, but I will do some, some digging on that and report back to you offline, or on, in, in an email that, that the superintendent can send around with some thoughts on that, once I get a chance to review it a little more detail.
Okay.
I think last year on our platform, we might have had something about allowing school districts to make those third grade, or, and all retention decisions locally, as opposed to being required under state.
Yeah, it would just be nice if we had a little more local control.
Well, and things might be different now, because we have assistance in Tallahassee, but I know the last three years I've gone, I feel like if we walked in with this.
Oh, no, that's insane.
They just don't, and, and trust me, like, how do you pare down, and I don't even, they do it with this too, to be honest with you.
Yeah, they read the first.
Right, and they're like, okay, you know, and, I mean, I, we did simulate conversation with the DCD, anytime you can say to them, "We're going to save you $10 million," they're going to, "Oh, what is that, what did you say?" Like, oh, let me listen to you now, but, I don't know, it was just a very disheartening situation to be involved with, and, and I don't know how we pick what's most important for our kids.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned, Ms. Luke, the DCD, I should have mentioned that in my comments. That, of course, there's a Senate, a Senate authorized study that's ongoing, I, I planned this week on kind of poking around with Senator Hugh Cole and Senator Hudson, who led the effort on that, to get that study funded, and see kind of where we are, and what they think the timeline is. I know there had been hope that there would be final recommendations or final study back to the legislature, to the Senate by this time session started, so they had some time to, to, to maybe look at it, so I'll report back on that as well, I should have mentioned that in my comments, I apologize.
You say they haven't started the study yet?
No, it's ongoing, there's just no, no results yet.
I was going to say, when will it be done? That's what we wanted to know. Okay.
Oh, and just one more thing, is nobody, nobody minds if I disagree with, with them
getting rid of PE, right? Like, I'm not okay with that line.
With them getting rid of PE?
There, there's the section on?
Oh, on the FSBA?
Yeah.
Yeah, that we talked about, replacing recessive PE.
Removing, yeah, removing PE, right, are we, are we down with that?
Yeah, we're down with it.
Okay, all right.
It is about you, you would say.
I'm the only member, no, just me.
Go back and tell us which district.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I mean, otherwise, we're going to have a problem, but.
That's right. All right, any other questions?
No further questions.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you so much for, for joining us again tonight, and all your work, and we appreciate the partnership on this one.
Do we vote?
Oh, yeah, let's, y'all ready to vote on it?
Yes.
All right, let's do that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, unanimously, with one voice, we are telling the legislature this is what we want. Superintendent, I'll come to you for your report tonight.
Last week, we were able to recognize our 2018 Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year. Stephanie Mijewski from East Ridge Middle School is our Principal of the Year, and Abigail Crosby at Eustace Middle School is our Assistant Principal of the Year, so congratulations to them. Just a reminder from your resolution earlier this month, this is Red Ribbon Week, and it's also Bullying Prevention Month, so you're supposed to wear your orange on Wednesday, because it's Unity Day. And lastly, just a little update on talking about student access, we met today, and we are going to be extending our options for Lake Virtual, and I'm looking forward to sharing more of that with you in the coming weeks, as we open it up as a year-round program for further acceleration and remediation of students, it will actually be a cost savings to the district, and so we're excited about working with, hopefully, our homeschool families, and others who are interested in, in being a part of Lake Virtual School, it has so many exciting things to offer, and so we have a new principal there, who will be unveiling a lot of that, working along with Ms. Owens to do a marketing of, of the opportunities that exist there, so we're excited about that. Lastly, I'll just mention, we didn't send any letters of condolence, but I would like to extend my deepest condolences, because these were very recent, so we'll have some letters coming. The health assistant at Mineola Charter passed away suddenly last night, and her name is Shalonda Montgomery. School is missing her terribly today, as they mourn her loss, and just celebrate all the achievements and things that she was able to do there at that school, and so condolences to her family, as well as to that school family. And then, you know, there's nothing harder than losing children, and we had two last week, unfortunately, we lost a student at Imagine South Lake Charter, I talked to their principal today, and they're, they're grieving there as well, and then, of course, Zion James, the five-year-old who attends Rhymes, who passed away suddenly as well, and so we just send our deepest condolences to the school communities, those communities overall, as well as to the families of those children.
Thank you. Sandy, do you want to kick us off tonight on the board member comments?
How much time I got? Just want to say, I, I failed to do this at the last meeting, Ms. Stuhoff, that was a great presentation that you gave last week, and, and I understand Carmen wants to hire you still, but you're doing a great job over there, and I've, I've made comments about some of the things that you brought out in your presentation about the dresses especially, I thought that was overwhelming.
Thank you so much.
So, that was great. And Ms. Ross, I would like to say thank you for bringing that forward, and, and having the nerve to bring it forward, because it does, I know, I, I have faced that side this way, and I'm okay sitting there, but when you get up there on that podium, you're just like, all nerves, but I appreciate you bringing that forward to us. And Ms. Gell, I, I, my hat's off to her as well, for what she's trying to do there at Leesburg, to turn that around, and maybe by the time those children get to the high school, we don't have the problems that we've had in the years there, so, and even at the middle school in between. We were able to attend, the superintendent and I, Pine Lakes Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, and I came away with a souvenir that I understand we bought through our funding, that we lost for that, but, you know, I've, I've never seen scissors that long, you know, and, I'm like, wow, you know, but it, it was, it was a good school, but there's some things that I personally didn't like about it, because I work in the kitchens and things of that nature, and kitchen was what?
Weak.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there was no place to work.
You know, Bill, that, that school barely falls into your district there, there was a lot of controversy at that line, you can perhaps volunteer some, some kitchen assistants.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, and, and I saw something on Facebook, and I, I shared it, about bullying, and it was, a teacher used two apples as an example, and if you get a chance, if you have me on your Facebook, pick it up and look at it, I mean, it's very good, about how she was able to introduce bullying in, in her classroom, of what it is, and how sometimes you don't realize the hurt that you do, because you're looking on the outside, but on the inside, that individual's hurting real bad. So I, I thought that was a pretty good presentation, but, and superintendent, as always, she leads the road as far as giving everyone accolades for Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, Teacher of the Year, and all that, but I just want to also thank each one of them for all the hard work that they do. And there's a lot that is going on still in the county. One thing I would like to bring up is, back during budget time, and everything, we talked about a rubberized track at Taveries High School, and you told me there's no funding. So, what I've asked, that you allow me to go further with it, and you said, "Go ahead," but there's no funding, and so what we are doing is, we're trying to meet with the county, and with other groups as well, to try to get the funding, so that it doesn't come out of our funding. And so, I have a meeting Thursday with the county, to see what grants are available there, I will be meeting with Dr. Weiskopf's group, with her grants, trying to see what grants are available out there for us to get through that, and plus, other fundraisers that we're looking at, Carmen told me, "Don't go to the businesses, you better go to the county and the state, and see what you can get," because I'm hitting the businesses, she said, yeah. So, but, we need about $300,000, but it, what it will do, it will bring Leesburg, Umatilla, Eustace, Mount Dora, and Taveries to the Taveries Track, be able to hold events there, and be able to hold regionals, as well as state, and AAU and other events, so it has a, a big resource that it can bring to our community here, and I'm hoping to be able to utilize that and to get some money from the county, so I appreciate your support on that. Also, former school board member Debbie Stivender has put her efforts into doing this as well, volunteered, she said, "If you need me, call me," I said, "Not a problem, I just called you, didn't you hear me?" So, but she would be helping in trying to get some funds as well, and we're looking at maybe trying to do a track meet, and maybe, you know, have some superstars, you know, there at the track meet, to try to draw some attention, and get some money, so, you know, the thing is, this is something for safety for our kids and athletics, and this is something this is something that I, I believe in. If a high school principal has to know how to balance the academics as well as the athletics, because kids play athletics, and to do that, they have to have the academics. And so therefore, you're, you have a win-win. But if you're only pushing for academics only and you're not concerned about athletics, you're going to lose a lot of students, and that's where I think our principals are at the top there, so I thank you.
All right. Well done. Kristi.
So I, I attended, I'm our representative for the wellness meetings, and I attended the wellness meeting this month, and they highlighted recess, which is very important also. And they highlighted Triangle, Triangle Elementary School, you'll be happy, Sandy, and their gardens, which have actually spread now to 20 schools in Lake County, including high schools. We had a representative, Erica Rodriguez, from the Healthier United States School Challenge Specialist. She was absolutely wonderful, and she recommended a website called Teen Nutrition, which really had some great games and really good information that teachers might be interested in. I actually, I'm going to play some of them with my son, my older son, and teach him what protein actually is, because I'm tired of telling him to eat something with protein and then him asking me if like bread has protein, or pasta. And so it was a, that was generally the gist of the, the highlights of what we hit. I visited Carver Middle School. I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Truitt, Ms. Kelly Truitt, for welcoming me onto campus, and thank you to all the teachers for letting me walk through their campus. It was a, it's such a lovely campus, and I really like how, how the students are all, every, every, what is the word? Pods? That they're set up in, in groups of four?
Pods.
Are they pods? Is that pods? Okay. So, so the middle schools are set up so that math, social studies, science, and, and reading are all together, and then there's another group of sixth graders set up like that. And it's such a nice setup to come from elementary school to middle school with that setup. And I know not all of our middle schools do it, but it's, it's a really nice feel because I feel like they, it's a nicer transition for the students. So I really just enjoyed that visit. I also was pleased to go to our county advisory committee meeting, and I'm our representative for that also, and our superintendent was there, and it was lovely to see our superintendent there. And I'm just, I'm hopeful that more and more SAC members, so the county advisory committee meetings are designed for general members of the public and also for the president of each school's SAC advisory group to come to, so that there's now a district advisory group, and we can get feedback from the community. And I was just so pleased the superintendent, Ms. Weiskopf, attended, and it was just a wonderful session, and I think, I think they'll be very productive in the future. I wanted to thank the NEA, AFT, FEA, who have decided to give $100 to all FEA members who have signed up for assistance for Hurricane Irma. I thought that was very helpful to teachers. And please pray for the family of Zion James. That's just a horrific tragedy, and I think any parent can understand how awful losing a child would be. So please pray for that family. And that's all I have.
Lindsay, I don't remember, what college are you applying for?
Not quite sure yet.
Okay, well done. Best of luck to you. You're amazing. Thanks.
University of Florida.
A couple of, yeah, University of Florida's. Yeah, you have, anyway. Okay, so pretty exciting, we had the opportunity to, to be with the superintendent, Mrs. Luke, as they addressed, and I was the wingman for the commercial builders and getting their input into, to how they can become part. And that's the exciting thing for me, as we move around and I watch the superintendent and watching Mrs. Luke, is that people genuinely want to be part of the solution and that we are inviting them in. So, so kudos, superintendent, and you, Mrs. Luke, and that was amazing. Then also had the opportunity to go to, to Pine Ridge for their Elementary National Honor Society induction. This is my fourth year, and so I was reflecting on the way home, because I, you look in the eyes of these young people, and those are our future leaders, and they're all taking the oath to their pillars for leadership and community and that kind of thing. And that those that, the first time I ever went, are now 10th graders. It's just kind of hard to believe that time flies when you're having fun. And then I was reflecting on that, in the first part of my service, there was a young mom that came before us, and her son had been bullied, and that she was one aggravated mom, like a bear. And I watched over time that mom become part of the solution and work with Sabrina Dillon-Banks and, and our bullying. She hosts a website or a Facebook site and is a real activist against bullying and really brought attention for this board member and I think for the district in a positive way, so turned some anger into a real positive experience. Her husband died last week unexpectedly. There's a memorial the 28th of October, and I think she's invited everyone to come to it. But to Robyn Douglas, you have my absolute admiration and my sincere condolences.
All right. Stephanie?
I also wanted to say congratulations to you, young lady. Enjoy the rest of your senior year. You represented Eustace High School well, and thank Mrs. Velez, and, and I believe your mother is not sitting next to you. I could see her smiling and winking, and so I kind of put those together. So thank you both for your support. It's, it's a tremendous job that you've done, so you should be congratulated as well. I also wanted to recognize Melissa Carley and Lindsey Mesner are two of our program specialists, and they presented at, we had a regional national council, National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Conference last week, and those two ladies represented Lake County. Their topic, I had to write it down, was using writing to deepen students' proficiency with mathematics content and practice standards. And just to know that our, our people are the best people, and they're out there informing other people on the work that we do every day. So I wanted to tell those two ladies congratulations. I also wanted to thank Dr. Burns and Mr. Mathias and Commissioner Campione and Commissioner Parks for coming to our BUNCO Eustace Service League event. Those dollars go to teachers for grants, and they go to support student scholarships. So for students specifically in the Eustace High School scholarships, okay, and teachers at Eustace, so that we really appreciate their support. And Mr. Parks came dressed as Obi-Wan Kenobi and stayed and played BUNCO all night long, as did Mr. Mathias's wife and Dr. Burns and her mother, who is a first-grade teacher for us here in Lake County. So super nice to see so much fun and supportive such a good cause. And I also wanted to thank Mrs. Beal, who's a Eustace High School teacher that Stuhoff mentioned earlier. She not only came to BUNCO, but she also invited me to speak at her class about leadership. They asked some really good questions about the school board, and it's amazing to me the misconceptions that people have about what we do and how we do it. And she, she even came out to me afterwards and said, I really learned a lot. Thank you for coming today, so I appreciate them offering us the opportunity to go there. I think that's all I had, so.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start off by expressing my thanks and gratitude to Wayne Cockcroft and his team. Today, I had the opportunity to tag along on one of the school walks, and I'll tell you, I know we've all talked highly about this regional approach, but today I had the opportunity to witness what this regional approach looks like and to think about getting a team of such experts in, in teaching strategies there into the schools and providing feedback in a non-confrontational way and helping teachers become part of the solution. It is fantastic. And, and to think that we, this is all part of your reorganizational structure that actually saved us money, it, it's incredible. So I, I tell you, it was a great, great experience, and I, I personally learned a lot on that today, so thank you for, for allowing me to, to tag along. I, last couple of weeks, I've been representing us on the Hurricane Task Force through the United Way in preparation for folks that are either arriving from Puerto Rico or expected to still arrive. We started with a group of like 75 or 100 people from the community, and we all spoke for a while about the different challenges that we might expect, and then broke off into subcommittees. It might surprise you, but for whatever reason, there were not dozens of people running off to the education subcommittee. So it was a very small group, but it's all about quality there, and, and I'll tell you that based on some of the challenges that we spoke about, that we're expecting in the world of education, I, I think our district is poised and ready to handle those as they come forward. One of the most noteworthy things that the committee has focused on is what is the comfort level for these students who are transitioning, and is that a smooth transition? Are these kids making friends? Are their needs being met? And we would certainly look to our teachers to be that first line of defense for these students, just as they are for all of our students that come forward. I know our teachers will be the ones who will be able to smooth that transition and helping them with, with a comfortable and inviting learning environment, and that they would be able to partner with our guidance counselors and social workers as they need. But one other thing that I'll throw out there that the United Way has offered in terms of assistance is that they said they do have some money available for, a small amount of money, but money available for, for students that might be in need of school supplies or clothing. So certainly if any of those, if we become aware of any of those students, we could leverage, leverage that. Other than that, I don't think that we have seen quite the impact that other districts have seen where they're in the hundreds, and based on the information that we've gathered from our staffing allocations, we seem like we're, we're ready to receive these people. But I believe you superintendent had put us on the list to be able to recount if our number reaches that, that threshold, so.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five currently, so, all right.
I did, I forgot one thing. I should turn my microphone off, but I had written down her at the bottom, and I didn't see it. Mr. Tibbetts, I, I know you guys know him coming up and speaking and attending our, our meetings, but twice now, I've been having lunch with my own children at Umatilla Elementary School, and he has been there mentoring the students that he mentors. So I just wanted to let you guys know that his work goes beyond looking at the agenda and in detail and coming to tell us, based on his experience, what, what he would think we need to look at. But he also puts his money where his mouth is, and he is in our schools, and he is impacting our kids' lives, and so I wanted to publicly thank you for that. Thank you.
And I don't know how we could end on a more positive note. So unless there are any, any objections to adjourning, have a great night.